We'd like to go ahead and welcome you to the Fruita City Council meeting. The time is now seven oh one P M. And we're going to go ahead and call the meeting to order. Shannon, would you please poll council?
Actually think Ciara.
Oh, Ciara.
Tonight, but sure, yeah.
Here for me tonight.
All right, I like it.
Counselor Bremen.
Here.
Counselor Purser. Counselor Williams.
Yes.
Counselor Cry.
Here remotely.
Counselor Miller.
Present.
And then Counselor Hansi is excused absent.
All right, with that, we're moving to our moment of silence, the pledge of allegiance. If you'd please stand with us. We'd like to take the opportunity to have a moment of silence to allow all faith and belief the opportunity for a silent prayer. Thank you. If you'd please join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we've got an agenda before. So there any changes to that agenda?
No changes to the agenda, Mr. Mayor.
All right, hearing none, do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
I move to approve the agenda. Second.
All right, we've got a first and a second. No other questions. Would you please poll council?
Counselor Purser.
Yes.
Counselor Williams.
Yes.
Counselor Cry.
Hi.
Counselor Miller.
Yes.
And Counselor Bremen.
Hi.
All right, we're going to move into our proclamation and presentations. And so we've got one presentation tonight. It's recognizing some of our public works employees for completing the two thousand twenty-three Public Works Supervisor Training Program. And I've asked Kimberly to say a lot of words tonight. You know how much she likes to read. She's got a whole bunch of stuff there to read tonight.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Kimberly Bullen, Public Works Director. I apologize for my voice. I'm getting over a cold, so please bear with me. But we are here tonight to recognize several members of our Public Works team for completing the two thousand twenty-three Supervisor Training Program. As you guys are aware, we've had a number of employees with Public Works that have had long careers with Public Works and have recently retired. And so our succession planning efforts are built around trying to prepare that next generation of Public Works employees to take on those roles as people leave the organization. This is the first time that we've offered this program with Public Works. It's associated with the American Public Works Association. It's their credential Supervisor Training Program. I'd like to call up, well, Mike Bramlett left because he got called out for locate, so he won't be here, but he was here. Mike Bramlett is our Streets Crew Leader. Jesse McClasky, if you guys will come on up. Jesse's one of our Street Maintenance Worker twos and is preparing to take an exam to actually be promoted into a heavy equipment operator. We've got Tony Fuco, our Fleet Supervisor. We've got Matt Hayfley, which is our wastewater reclamation facility A operator, and then also Jeff Brondam, who's not here tonight due to some other commitments, who's also another A operator. These gentlemen, so we put out the email to all of our Public Works employees to offer this opportunity. We had seven employees sign up for it. Two employees have since left employment with the city, but these five stuck it out, and it's been a commitment. So these are the reading materials that they had to go through that covered Public Works Administration, Operations, Finance, Communications. And they were given about two hours every week to study, review the material, read the material. And then every approximately every couple of weeks, we would get together and go through and discuss the units and they we would go through a practice exam. Hit and miss. I mean, obviously, when we got into our busy season, it seemed like forever since we got to meet. So but they stuck it out and they completed the program. We started the program on January nineteenth. And we did our last unit review on November twenty-ninth. So almost a year-long commitment to get through this program. They will have the opportunity to sit for the credentialed certification by APWA if they choose. But they got through the material and I'm hoping and I think most of them, if not all of them, will be sitting for that exam at some point. So with that, I would just turn it over to council for the formal recognition.
All right, sounds good. Well, thank you. We appreciate the effort everybody's putting in here. Does anybody have any questions for him? Want to put him on the spot or Kimberly?
Just looking at the reading material and saying, better you.
So we do have a certificate for you guys. And I don't I don't know which three. She rattled them off so quick. So what's your name? Matt. All right, let me. I've got one here for you. Don't be shy. I know you probably aren't. Thank you, Matt. We appreciate it. And don't go too far, because I know they're going to want to get photos. Jesse, all right. It'll be the last one I pull out every time. Tony, right here. Thank you. All right, it's always great to see our employees willing to go and do the extra. So we really like that. So with that, we're going to move into our next item, which is public participation. So this section is set aside for the city council to listen to comments by the public regarding items that do not appear on the agenda. Generally, the city council will not take any action on these items. We'd ask that you limit your comments to three minutes. So is there anybody that'd like to speak about something that's not on the agenda? All right, if you want to come up, step up to the microphone, state your name and address for the record, please.
Thank you for listening. My name is Craig Lombard. I live at four oh seven West Pabre Avenue with my wife and my two dogs. I'm here to voice my concern regarding the potential city market service station to be placed on the corner of Aspen and Colson. Having a gas station within five hundred feet of my home is concerning to me. My main concerns about the increase or increased traffic on both Aspen, Willow, and Colson. Being the the entrance or ingress off of Aspen Street being a potential stacking point for cars onto the thoroughfare, preventing traffic from moving freely. Unlike Coloramo, the bank next door, which can compound cars on its property, this half acre lot cannot do that. So I'm worried about that. Also, the egress or exits onto Willow would greatly increase the traffic on Willow, which is a short one-block street and would in or would cause problems or on a quiet residential street in our neighborhood, excuse me. Furthermore, increased traffic at the corner of Aspen and Colson, also concerning for emergency vehicles access to six and fifty. They use Pabre Avenue when they're called to Loma and Mac, and so they'll make that turn. And with the egress and and exiting and entering off of Colson, I wonder if that might be a problem. Lastly, let's see, there are four low-income houses that will be destroyed or taken down to make room for the gas station. There are also several mature trees that are on that site that would be lost also. Finally, if the gas station was approved, I was wondering why E V charging wasn't part of the plan in the beginning. Thank you. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Craig. Is there anybody else in the audience that'd like to speak on something that's not on the agenda? Now is your opportunity. All right, hearing none, we're going to close public comment, and we're going to move into our consent agenda. So these are items where all conditions or requirements have been agreed to or met prior to the time they come before council, and they'll all be approved by one vote. So if there's anybody in the audience that'd like to speak on something that's on the consent agenda, now is your opportunity. All right, hearing none, I'll close the public participation and bring it back to council. Does anybody have any questions on the consent?
I move that we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
All right, we've got a first and a second. Any other questions or comments? All right, hearing none. Ciara, would you please poll council?
Counselor Williams. Counselor Cry.
Hi.
Hi.
Counselor Miller. Counselor Bremen.
Yes.
And Counselor Purser.
I'm all alone over here.
No, motion passes five zero. Thank you.
All right, with that, we're going to move into our public hearings. We've got one quasi judicial hearing and one legislative hearing. So our first one is our quasi judicial hearing, and it's a liquor license, a report of changes. And so we've got Margaret Sell here to present on that. She's our Finance Director and City Clerk.
Thank you, Mayor. Excuse me, I'm here to present base camp provisions, has submitted a report of changes in their corporate structure for the brew pub license that's located at one fifty-five North Mulberry Street. The change currently Laura Fisher owns a hundred percent of the stock, and that stock is being transferred to Nicholas Westfall. The corporation is still staying intact. It's just a transfer of the stocks with that. The background checks have been completed through the FBI, CBI, Mesa County Sheriff, Grand Junction P D, and Fruitah Police Department. There are no records of arrests, and all of those background checks came back clear. It's staff's recommendation to approve the report of changes of corporate structure, base camp provisions, LLC, the brew public liquor license located at one fifty-five North Mulberry Street, transferring a hundred percent of the ownership interest from Laura Fisher to Nickle- Nicholas Westfall.
All right, is Nicholas here tonight?
Yes, I'm present. Sorry, I'm not physically present as I'm currently out of town. I I appreciate everything you've done for our community. It's really not a lot of change that we're having. I am one of the original owners and founders of Basecamp. I was the one that slaved over the remodel, but I've kind of existed in the background as I have a day a day job and a commitment to the medical community. But given a recent divorce of my business partners, that's why we're transferring the medical, or excuse me, the liquor license from Laura Fisher to me.
All right, anything else to add before we open it up to public comment? All right, we're going to open it up to public comment. Is there's anybody in the audience that'd like to speak on this item? Now is your opportunity. All right, hearing none, we'll close public participation and bring you back to council. Does anybody have any questions for Margaret or Nicholas on this item? All right, do we have a motion?
I move to approve the report of change for base camp provisions, LLC, DBA Basecamp Provisions Brew Publicer License located at one five five North Mulberry Street, transferring one hundred percent membership interest in the corporation from Laura Fisher to Nicholas Westfall.
Second.
All right, we've got a first and a second. Any other questions or comments? All right, hearing none. Ciara, would you please poll council?
Counselor Cry.
Hi.
Counselor Miller. Counselor Bremen.
Yes.
Counselor Purser. And Counselor Williams.
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Thank you, Nicholas, for being here tonight.
Thank you.
I apologize for not being there in person, but thank you guys for your time, energy, and effort to the for in a community.
Thanks.
All right, with that, we're going to move into our legislative hearing. We've got our second reading for the regular municipal election, concerning the ballot question for Tabor. And so I was Margaret presenting on this one. All right.
As you know, you've had some history with the forming a Tabor Committee to review post-question and how that looks for the April second, twenty twenty-four election. They came back with the recommendation that essentially we go forward with what we've done in the past, a six-year timeframe on the Tabor restriction limits being lifted and then spending those on capital improvements and maintenance of capital improvements. So what this ordinance does is essentially set the ballot question for the April election and puts it on the ballot for April. If there's any questions, this is essentially the same ballot question that has been on the ballot for the last or five elections when we've asked this question with no changes on that.
All right, with that, we're going to open up to public comment. So if there's anybody in the audience that'd like to speak on this item, now would be your opportunity. All right, hearing none, I'll close public comment. Does anybody have any questions or comments on this item? All right, hearing none, do we have a motion?
I move to accept the Tabor Committee's recommendation and adopt ordinance two zero two three dash fourteen submitting to the voters in April second, two thousand twenty-four regular municipal election, a ballot question, providing for the retention of revenues generated in excess of the table limitations for the period January first, two thousand twenty-five through December thirty-first, two thousand thirty, for the purposes of implementing the city's capital improvement plan and the maintenance of those improvements.
All right, we've got a first and a second. Any other questions or comments? All right, hearing none. Ciara, would you please poll council?
Counselor Miller.
Yes.
Counselor Bremen.
Yes.
Counselor Purser. Counselor Williams. And Counselor Cry.
Hi.
All right, motion passes five zero.
All right, thank you. So I can?
I was just wondering if we should recognize the committee that did all the work for that ordinance.
Yeah.
Yeah, we definitely should.
Way to go, committee.
Thank you, Janine.
We thanked them when they were here presenting. We did thank them when they were presenting.
Okay, all right.
That was a lot of work.
Way to go, committee. I mean.
All right. All right, with that, we're going to move into our next great agenda.
Janine, that's what you get.
We've got a presentation. Scott Gordon with roadway asset services will provide the city council with an overview of the pavement assessment project. Oh, is that Kimberly doing that one as well?
I'm just going to introduce it.
All right, sounds good.
So good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council, Kimberly Bullen, Public Works Director. So as you may recall, that we entered into a contract with roadway asset services to provide a pavement assessment of our of our roadway system, as well as some of the other infrastructure, such as curb and gutter, sidewalk, street signs, ADA ramps, things of that nature. As you guys recall, roads came in as the number one priority in our community survey several years ago. And so as one of our performance measures in our annual budget is to maintain a Pacer score of seven point zero, or what we're now transitioning to is a P C I score of seventy or higher, and a condition rating with less than ten percent below a Pacer score of five or P C I score of fifty. Scott Gordon is here virtually. He's with Raz, and he's present. He's going to be presenting the findings of the assessment itself and talk about some of the things we're going to do using a budget optimization street selector system that they provide, which helps us with some budgetary modeling, talking about what deferred maintenance would do to our road system if we don't stay up with some of the road treatments that we have for our road network. So hopefully Scott's online and.
I'm here. Can you hear me? Okay.
Yes. Yeah.
All right. Let me share a screen and we'll get started.
Do you want to make one other comment? This also couldn't have been done without the help of a DOLA administrative grant that we received for twenty-five thousand to help offset some of our costs.
Okay, can you all see the screen?
Yes.
Presentation. Excellent. Well, thanks for having me this evening. I appreciate you allowing me to do this virtually. I'm presently in Salt Lake City doing other evaluation work with another municipality. I am introduce myself a little bit. I'm a professional engineer. I am licensed in the state of Colorado. I am president of roadway asset services. I've been doing payment evaluation, payment design work for over thirty years. I actually started my career in Denver at C T L Thompson, working on Denver International Airport back in the early nineties. So I've been doing this a long time. We started R E S to be able to provide agencies with a a comprehensive analysis of payments where we can use some of the latest technology in G I S and imagery to be able to more efficiently evaluate the payments and actually be more accurate, take a lot of the subjectivity away from it. So I'm going to go through this pretty quick. I don't want to get too boring with pavements, but wanted to explain some of the basics to you with pavement management theory of how we're looking at this, why this is so important, and why we need to evaluate your your network. If you look at the curves here, the orange curve is representative of a brand-new road. We've paved it. We start the cycle of life, and it's starting to oxidize and deteriorate a little bit as you see it on the curve. If we were not to do anything to that road over the next, say, thirty years, you would follow that black line down that curves down, and you'd see it deteriorating down through the good, fair, poor, very poor condition. Until at some point, we've got to do a major rehab, whether we mill an overlay or we have to totally reconstruct the road. So that's the the vertical line representation going back up to a good condition. The point in this graph is that's going to cost us over twenty dollars a square yard of pavement to rebuild it or do major rehab at that point. Preservation technique looks at these small blue lines to where what we're doing is cheaper treatments around three dollars, typically maybe four dollars a yard to do some kind of surface seal, microseal, slurry seals. There's a lot of different options that we can apply there. But I often equate that as painting your house. So if you build a house and you put new siding on there and you don't paint it, it's going to weather and age over time, and you're going to have to replace the structure, which is what we're doing with that first scenario. But if we paint it every four or five years and protect it, which is what we're doing with surface seals on the pavements, we can prolong that life at a cheaper cost and extend the service life without letting it deteriorate to a lower condition and cost a lot more money. Now theoretically, that's all great. In reality, we have a variety of roads. Some have to be rebuilt. Some of them we can maintain in the preservation. So the study was really trying to set up and understand the network and what condition you're in. This is some of the equipment we brought to town to evaluate the roads. Not going to get into too much detail, but there is some laser measurements on the back measuring the texture of the pavement. That's how we detect cracking. We also take imagery of that and do a small A I mount valuation to look at crack patterns and those type of things. Use G I S coordinates to know exactly where the cracking is occurring. And we also have this ladybug imagery. We collect pictures of anything asset within your right of way that we can evaluate also. And then along the front is a later laser profiler that is measuring the smoothness or the ride quality of the road. We call it international roughness index, but but there's a process that we follow that measures how smooth that road is riding. So we're going to look at some of those numbers and how that equates. Once we get all the data out of the van, we've got to be able to process it. We've developed software we called Road Trip Technical Rating Intelligence Program. It's basically an algorithm that takes all the readings from the equipment on the van, and we equate it to an A S T M D sixty-four thirty-three process. That is a procedure that's been in place for several decades, understanding what distress we look at, how to classify it, how to measure it, and how to determine severity of that. Once we get those evaluations completed, identifying the distress, we can determine deducts for each of those distress. Or in other words, how bad do those distresses deteriorate the road? And therefore, we can use those numbers to calculate this pavement condition index that is on a scale from zero to one hundred. So one hundred is going to be a brand-new road, zero. I was joking around. You probably never see a zero, but it's a road I would never drive a car down. So somewhere in there, we're going to look at the condition of the roads based on what we're measuring distress. So it is somewhat of a subjective analysis. But we try to keep this to where it's consistent and it's repeatable in how we look at things. So once we drove the network, we did the rating. We developed a map here. We're going to have a full-scale report at the end of the project that we'll be able to present to you. But this is just a map showing how we drove all the roads within your network. We rated them according to the A S T M procedure, and this table that you see over here is basically looking at how we rate these based on this zero to hundred scale. So these are cutoff points that the A S T M outlines. These descriptors are really just that. They're adjectives explaining, you know, what the condition of the road is in. But if you look through here, you can see the centerline miles of roadway that we drove. We measured a little bit over seventy-five centerline miles of road, and we break it down into mileage in each one of these categories, along with the color coding. So we start with the good satisfactory roads being green. That's your highest percentage. You have over fifty percent of your roads are in good or satisfactory condition. So that's the green roads that you see here on the map, all the way down to the poor roads, very poor roads, which are shown in red, and those are going to outline. So talking to Kimberly, there's really no big surprises there. You you've got the main part of downtown here sitting in fair that some of your older pavements, you've got some outliers. We do have a couple dash lines that were either gravel roads or we couldn't drive down and evaluate those for some reason. But this is the map. This is the overall network. And if we look at a little bit more on what's going on with that, there's a couple of things that I usually evaluate when I start looking at the breakdown of your roadway based on your network percentages. So first of all, we look at the average P C I, and Kimberly stated earlier that your goal is to be above a seventy. Well, you're doing a good job. You're at a seventy-nine at this point. That's a fairly healthy network. We've done some other networks in the county or in the area, one being Mesa County, one being Grand Junction, and and their scores were a little bit lower, but still pretty good shape there. But you're falling in line with with pretty much how that's performing in the area. Some things of note, percentage of good roads, we typically want to see more than fifteen percent. In this good category, you're sitting at about twenty-four percent. So that's a good indicator. You've got a lot of roads in the SAS factory, which is telling me, running through this analysis, we're probably going to see a lot of preservation opportunity for you to go out and retreat some roads and cover some mileage that way at a fairly cheap cost. We'll get into that a little bit more later. But looking at another category we keep an eye on is what I call backlog. It's really these last two categories. And really, when we say backlog, that is just roads that have to be rebuilt. There's not much else you could do to them maintain maintenance-wise. We're really going to have to bust up the asphalt to get down into the base and probably rebuild it coming back up. So we like to see that number less than ten. So you're in good shape. You're less than one percent. So that tells me you don't have a huge dollar amount looming over your head that you've got to go rebuild a bunch of roads. You've got some projects to work on, but it's not something that's going to be very difficult for you to achieve with with realistic budgets. Going on in, we did look at the roughness, the ride quality of the road, and you see the map there. We did similar breakdown based on the categories. It's a zero to hundred scale is what we normalize that to. You see, you've got a little bit more color in here than you did in your condition rating. So number one, what you should notice is condition or distresses and performance of a road don't always equate to a smooth drive road. Ride quality is really affected by a lot of different factors. Some of it's the construction techniques. It's the equipment that was used. Some of the finishing of the project itself as the construction crew was building it. Some of it's just depending on how the road is deteriorating and what distresses are we seeing. So sometimes it's related to that. But it's something that we want to keep an eye on. Kimberly and I are having discussions about that, your staff. There's certain techniques that we can use. We'll talk about as we go through this that may improve the ride quality of some of these roads without having to go rebuild them. But just wanted you to notice that number and how that fits. And if we look at that bar chart, you can see the trend has shifted a little bit from having over twenty-four percent in the good. Now we're seeing quite a bit in the SAS factory and fair. So overall, your network is riding a little bit rougher than what the condition is showing us from distress. So it's not a bad thing. It's just meaning that we've got a little bit rougher ride on some of the roads. That can all be corrected as we go through some of the maintenance techniques. Now, looking forward and how we're going to finish up the project in the next few months and get this wrapped up so we can start talking budgets and how we recommend maintenance. We've worked with your staff to kind of set up this, and I know this is fine print. I don't expect you to be reading this. I just kind of wanted to illustrate that we do have some of the basics in place. We've been working with to set up what we call the P C I trigger levels of when to apply certain maintenance techniques at what levels, based on what we're seeing in the roadway and how it's performing. We've also worked with the staff to get unit cost for each of these treatments from recent bids projects and what's going on in your area, what pricing we think we can get for these treatments. And that's going to be important going into the scenarios that we're going to start now. Because as we determine roads need certain maintenance, we can apply a dollar amount to that, and that's. And that's how we're going to start running through some budgets there. We'll also see some improvement factors of what we expect the road condition to be after the maintenance is applied. So that's kind of the basic setup. What I want to show you now is just some basic theory of Kimberly mentioned this boss software budget optimization, optimization street selector. Uh, it's basically a software that we've developed that we run internally. Uh, we've got trained staff that will run through these analysis. It keeps you from having to buy licensed software and your staff to try to learn new software and manage it. So we developed this as a professional service. Uh, it's an annual service. We come in, work with your staff, take the results that we've got this year, we'll plug it into our program. And we've set up that criteria I just showed you and we'll start running scenarios. We'll run through a couple of feedback iterative processes where the staff is able to look at results, make some tweaks and we'll get some refinement to what we're doing with the budget. But the theory in how do you prioritize which street gets maintenance is based on how much it's costing. We want to be uh, responsible with the dollars that are being spent and find the most efficient ways to do that. So if we look at this basic graph here of different treatment categories, we're going to start applying unit rate cost for each of these categories. So you see, as we get into the poor, very poor, serious, we're having to rebuild roads, so it's costing a lot more money. So what we can then do is look at the delta between those two or all those categories to see how much, if I look at a road that what I'm defining is critical within this gold box, meaning it's at the bottom end of a scale. And if I don't do anything to it next year, that deterioration is going to propagate into more. And it's going to fall into a lower category. It's going to require more work. That number in the white cell is our delta. That's how much more money it's going to cost because I deferred it another year than if I treat it now. So we can use that to develop some prioritization and say this higher delta cost means this category is our number one priority. Everything that falls within this gold box under number one is going to get treated first. Because if I don't, it's going to go this lower category and be reconstruction. Then we start getting into the poor where we start looking at maybe thin overlays or micro seals, those type of things. Then we get into more preservation modes where we're surface sealing roads. So the theory is the, the roads that fall in this lower end of these categories in these gold boxes are going to be our prioritized roads. So if a road is down here and very poor and we know it's got to be rebuilt or it's in serious and we're doing some major work to it, but it's at the upper end, it's going to be that condition for the next three or four years. We can sometimes defer those projects for another year or two. Go catch some of these higher priority roads that are much cheaper and preserve them from deteriorating further and spend our money more wisely. And then come back in a couple of years and pick these projects up. So it just kind of develops a prioritization hierarchy of how are we spending the money most efficiently? So hopefully that makes some sense. Uh, once we get into this analysis, what we'll come back to you with is results of that. We're going to show different scenarios. We'll run up to ten scenarios looking at different budgets amounts and what does the PCI do over time? If I've got unlimited money, I can boom that PCI way up to the top and keep it up there. More than likely, we're at one of these mid-level ranges where either we're keeping a steady state, meaning the average PCI is going to stay or in the high seventies. Or if we don't spend much money, it's going to deteriorate. So that will help us define what budget levels. Then we'll produce some charts down here where we start looking at uh, different dollar amounts, budget, annual budgets amounts on the X axis. And then what the resulting PCI after a five-year plan would be. And we'll see that trend line that's shown there in red. Depending on how much money we spend, how can we raise the overall network condition? And we'll look at some various steady states and we'll look at some other uh, budget amounts to kind of nail that down to what's going to work for you best. And then finally, on the map over there, we'll start producing plans for each year. So we produced a five-year plan. And we can visualize that in maps of what roads are going to be treated in each year. And that doesn't mean that that's got to be a, a rule that we stay by. It's always flexible. Uh, what I've talked to Kimberly and the staff is, is I recommend doing this analysis about every year. So you develop a five-year plan, you start working on that plan. After year one, we take the results, update the network, rerun the analysis again, create a new five-year plan. Chances are that second year is going to have a few changes to it. But we're going to follow that plan and just tweak it as we move each year based on results of what we're finding. So that in a uh, quick summary is, is what we've done to date and the general conditions of the roadway. Uh, next steps in the next month or so, we're going to start running those scenarios. And we'll start getting with staff to look at results and then come back to you guys with what we find from that. So I will open the floor if anybody has any questions or if you want to go back and review anything I threw up there.
All right. Thank you, Scott. Does anybody have any questions for him? I, I guess I have one question for maybe Mike or Kimberly. So really this isn't going to be an effect until the twenty twenty-five budget, correct? As far as implementing.
Exactly. We didn't have all of this data pulled together when we were developing the twenty twenty-four budget, but we did go back and look at. So previously our staff doing the Pacer score would go out and they would visually observe the road, you know, and give it some criteria, some points based on the criteria of the Pacer system. We went back and actually looked at what those roads that we presented in the budget looked like on the PCI and the pavement assessment, and they're very much aligned with the scoring that they came up with on the PCI.
Okay. So it wouldn't change anything for our budget for this next year?
I, I don't believe so, but we'll continue to evaluate. And if a road really stands out, that it needs to be prioritized above that, we'll just make that change in within roads that we'll do within the budget.
Yeah. You'll also recall that, uh, since the twenty twenty-one community survey results, we've been, and as revenues have been increasing year over year, we've been adding more to the street maintenance and repair. So next year we have one of our larger budgets we've, we've ever had with streets. Um, part of that's with the nineteen road project, but the rest is for maintenance on, on the, the roads that Kimberly identified. And so we're making sure they coordinate with the data we now have, but we are putting more funding towards that maintenance. And we're uh, really pleased with the uh, the data that we're, we're receiving through this project and also really pleased that that what we were doing in-house and it, you know, was still keeping us up um, above average. And, and this gives us some, a little bit more specific data as we, as we tackle certain projects year over year and, and the amount of funds that we're putting towards that, um, as it is a, a priority for the community.
I would just add, so in twenty twenty-three, we had a budget of about a hundred and fifty thousand for chip seal and patching. Next year, we're expected to have around two hundred and ten thousand based on the approval of the budget by council.
Thank you. Any other questions?
I just think kudos for like, that all looked pretty good. I think like that speaks highly of our, our departments.
Yeah, I think it's going to be really valuable information going forward and, and really planning out over the next five years, kind of what our network needs in terms of treatment. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Scott.
Thanks.
All right. Thank you, guys.
All right. With that, we're going to move into our city managers' report.
All right. Thank you, Mayor, members of council. Um, we received a submission for a hundred and eighty units next to the La Quinta. So that's been some, uh, we've actually received a, an official submission for that apartment complex. It'll start the review process, but that's on, that'll be placed online as well that you can look at. And then today, uh, I want to thank, uh, Councilor Miller. She participated in speaking on our behalf with our, our talking points we've had all along the way with the, um, the opposition to the TMDL changes, the total maximum daily load of salinity, uh, coming from the book cliffs and through the valley into the river. Um, that, uh, hearing, uh, as you know, we've teamed up with Mesa County, Grant, City of Grand Junction, uh, the private sector in the development field as well. Um, in funding and opposition, that hearing was today. Unfortunately, it was, uh, the, the TMDL we were opposing or the increase in those levels was, was upheld so that um, not a, not a big surprise, but definitely not the outcome everybody was hoping for, uh, for that. So I'm sure there'll be some, some additional information as we go forward, but wanting to let you know about that. And, and Amy may have more to, to share, uh, during her report, but I just wanted to let you all know that. And then, uh, we have uh, a few tours that we don't have to necessarily schedule tonight, but I want to get on your radar and see if there's interest. So we can start finding dates and maybe by the next meeting, we can, uh, put some dates out there. One is to, to reschedule the Lower Valley Fire District, um, tour. For those who haven't been able to, I know we've had about a, a, a group of council that's been able to, and then some that would like. Um, they're going to get some dates back to us and I'll bring that, uh, to the next meeting. Uh, the earliest would be January sixteenth potentially, uh, prior to the council meeting. The others sometime in January, February timeframe, we'd, we'd love to get you all on a riding tour uh, through Fruta to visit some of the sites of, of construction. Uh, and so, uh, construction in, you know, the Muse project, uh, the um, West Aspen pro- uh, project that's under development. Uh, some of the subdivisions, uh, that are, will be at a starting point or already breaking ground at that point in time just to get some visuals. So is that something you'd be interested in as trying to look to schedule as we? I know it, it won't be until after the holidays, but wanted to make sure that's something. We'll look at all these beans sometime prior to a, a council meeting. And then we'll send out some requests for availability and coordinate that. I just wanted to mention those. And then the last would be not really a tour, but maybe a ride. Uh, this was a, a, an idea of, of um, Councilmember, uh, Amy Miller. Um, but, and that is to, you know, repark, uh, we are, we are under contract. Uh, we had the first, uh, construction meeting yesterday or our staff did with, uh, Ford Construction. And so they are, they are start, they're mobilized and they are starting to remove some of the things that will be replaced and like the old playground. And there's going to be a lot of, uh, as you all know, not to go over the whole project tonight, we've talked about that numerous times, but a, a major overhaul of the entire, of the entire park. And, uh, Amy had an idea of, you know, uh, the Marigo round that, uh, has a lot of history in Fruta. If the council would like to get on that and get a quick video photo before they take that out of.
That's great.
Um, if you were to do that, ideally, if we could find a time tomorrow or Thursday would be most ideal, um, because, uh, uh, if we wait until next week, um, it'll start slowing them down of when they're going to remove it. Um, and there's other precautions next week that would have to be taken, hard hats and other types of things to enter the site. So if we could, if we could, if you, if there's a opportunity to find a time, even if it's after five tomorrow, some of us, there's some, there's another meeting at six thirty tomorrow. So we could do it between that five and six thirty pretty easily uh, tomorrow, or we could look at Thursday. Um, and, and just as a, as a reminder, that will be removed and we've, we, uh, the Arts and Culture Board at their next meeting will be reviewing proposals that came in on how to incorporate, how to change the old Marigo round into some kind of either functional or, or, or a piece of art that will go at, that will be at the, the new park. But that's all I have tonight. So is, would it work, uh, for, for you all? Is there interest in that?
Yeah.
Tomorrow?
I'm out of town until Saturday, but go ahead and proceed without me.
Dang it.
You'll be four or five because it's dark, getting dark on it.
We could do, we could do, we could, we still can do Monday. Um, you just, just have an extra, some extra. Have a.
I, I would prefer Monday if Ken could make it and that would be a better day for me. I could do it tomorrow, but we could, Monday's better for other people and we could get Ken involved. I think that'd be better.
I have G B R T C from three to four or five, but I'm free before or after.
It would have to be like at lunchtime or something. That'd be tough.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah, I can do tomorrow, Thursday or Monday af- after two thirty.
After three for me.
Monday's better for me. What's the earliest you could do on Monday, Ken?
Depends on how long GRVTC goes. Probably five would be my guess.
That's right. It's, yeah. If Ken can't do Monday, then we may as well just do it tomorrow.
Can you do tomorrow? Yeah, I can.
Long as it's later, yeah.
Uh, well, yeah, like what, what kind of later? After four thirty?
No, that was Monday. I can do anytime after three tomorrow.
Okay, how about?
Matthews after three, like three thirty or four, four?
I can do four.
Is that okay?
I think I can do four. Yeah.
I just, I gotta be down at the incubator by, by five.
Expand.
Four o'clock tomorrow?
Yes. All right.
I thank you.
Is that everything? All right. With that, then we're going to move into our council reports and actions. Uh, so our first item is, uh, we're going to adjourn in, as the Fruta City Council and convene as the Fruta Housing Authority. Um, and so we'll need a motion to do that.
So moved? I don't do it. Uh, I moved to adjourn as the Fruta Housing Authority. Oh, nope, wrong one. Sorry.
Adjourn as the Fruta City Council and convene as the Fruta Housing Authority to consider rec- recommending a twenty twenty-four budget for the Housing Authority Fund to the Fruta City Council.
All right. We've got first and a second. Any other questions or comments? All right. Hearing none. So would you please poll council?
Counselor Bremen. Counselor Purser.
Yes.
Counselor Williams.
Yes.
Counselor Cry.
Hi.
Counselor Miller.
Affirmative.
Motion passes five zero.
All right. Uh, so with that, we are now meeting as the Fruta Housing Authority. And so we're considering recommending a twenty twenty-four budget for the Housing Authority Fund. All right, Shannon, I guess you're up. Shannon Va- Vassen, our, uh, Assistant City Manager is here to present on this one.
Sure. Yeah. Well, thank you, uh, Mr. Chair and, uh, Board of Commissioners for the opportunity to present before you tonight. Um, at our November twenty-first city council meeting, it was recommended that uh, the city council adjourned to a Fruta Housing Authority to formally recommend a budget, uh, for the twenty twenty-four fiscal year. As is, uh, detailed out in our Housing Authority bylaws, it, um, the Housing Authority can submit a budget uh, to the city council for approval, um, each year. And, um, that is usually done through the traditional uh, budget calendar for the city of Fruta. So this budget has not changed since the first time we presented it in September. Uh, what I have on the screen here and what was also in the packet is the Housing Authority Fund. Um, really, we only have four line items included in this budget. It's, uh, pretty straightforward. We have, uh, a transfer from the Economic Development Fund, which will have to be approved by the city council when the budget is adopted, uh, fifty-one hundred dollars. We have, uh, out of that, five thousand is for legal expenses that may come up for general housing authority uh, projects and also a hundred dollars is for publishing in case we have any public hearings we need to publish, uh, next year. And we also have a line item for a developer, uh, reimbursement of fees or of legal expenses, which we've had some this year and we may have some as well next year. Uh, so as Mike was just detailing, we did receive an application for a project that may go through this process. It is a P U D, so we can't discuss it too much tonight. Um, but kind of like with the Fruta Muse, if they have any legal expenses um, that we need to help them out with, they will reimburse us for our cause associated with that. So you have a revenue on one side and then expense on the other side. Um, staff recommends this budget to be, uh, approved and eventually, uh, submitted to the Fruta City Council. Uh, this budget will change next year. As you remember, the Housing Authority entered into two agreements uh, with the Fruta Muse Development, uh, one for the He-Haw Grant, another for the Magna uh, Capital Projects Grant that will eventually pay back to them, uh, once they request payment. So again, same thing, just pass through the Housing Authority and through the city of Fruta. We'll have a revenue side and then we'll also have the expense side. So no money coming to us from those. Might as well, we'll get on interest earnings. But we'll just, uh, pay them when they request reimbursement next year. That is all I have presented. Always happy to answer any questions. And I'm sure Mike and I could easily do so, or hopefully easily do so as well. Thank you.
Do you have any questions related to this one?
I thought the original legal, uh, budget was fifty thousand dollars to be reimbursed. Right? And now we're looking at, there's a second lot of fifty? Or is this potentially for?
So fifty-five total and, um, fifty-five, one hundred. Five thousand is just in case we have any general legal expenses that may come up. I don't know if they will, but it's much easier to have some in the budget instead of having to go through like an appropriation later. Um, and that's coming from the Economic Development Fund, uh, of the city of Fruta. And the fifty is just if we, um, have any legal fees associated with any, uh, land uh, use applications, we'll get reimbursed if it goes through this process. We'll get reimbursed if it goes through this process. Yeah, thank you.
That number, Shannon, is based off from what we spent this year for the project that we were.
Yeah, pretty close to what we spent. I don't have those. I could look up the exact numbers, but I think that's what we eventually moved for the Muse project. I don't know if we went above that yet. I don't think so, but we can always double check. And again, if we do, we can always do a supplemental appropriation later. But again, this is just kind of a starting point if it were to come up throughout the year. But we won't spend the expenses if we don't have any of the revenue to do so.
Then next year, if we don't spend those, we're just that in that budget or that's kind of the plan.
Uh, it kind of depends on what we're seeing from the land use side. We do anticipate one might go through, so that's why it's in there now, but it kind of just varies. It'll probably will vary from year to year, I would imagine.
But then I know next year, as we're getting some of those grants reimbursed.
Yeah.
Revenue that come in for that as well.
Yep, 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 along with expenses too. So mostly just a pass through for these.
All right, does anybody else have any questions related to this? All right, hearing none. Do we have a motion?
I move to approve the Housing Authority budget as presented.
All right, we've got first and a second. Any other questions or comments? All right, hearing none. Ciara, would you please pull the, pull the Housing Authority?
Commissioner Williams?
Yes.
Commissioner Cry? Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Bremen?
Hi.
And Commissioner Purser? Motion passes five zero.
Thank you.
All right, you're welcome. All right, with that, we're going to, we need to make a motion to adjourn the Fruta Housing Authority and reconvene to the Fruta City Council.
I move to adjourn as the Fruta Housing Authority and reconvene as the Fruta City Council and return to the regular meeting.
All right, first and a second. Any other questions or comments? All right, hearing none. Ciara, would you please poll the Housing Authority?
Commissioner Cry?
Hi.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Bremen?
Yes.
Commissioner Purser? Commissioner Williams?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
All right, with that, we're moving to our next item, which is, which is our proclamation. So we're just doing the annual review of our proclamations approved for issuance throughout the next year. This is ones, our proclamations that we've done over the past year or several years. It doesn't include any that may come up throughout the year. So Margaret, are you presenting on this one? All right, I just, you didn't move quick enough to get up to the microphone.
Uh, yes, you have a list in your packets of the proclamations that we adopted last year and have adopted in previous years on an ongoing basis. That if you approve of those tonight, we'll issue those without coming back to you for approval at a workshop meeting or discussion. Other proclamations that we received throughout the year, we'll continue to bring through as a workshop discussion item to make sure that you want to present before we go forward. There's also a copy of a letter that we'll be sending out upon your action on these proclamations tonight. Just any of the people that had submitted those in the previous years so that they have a reminder that they'll need to still submit. A request for a proclamation to be heard on those.
All right, thank you, Margaret. Does anybody have any questions or comments on any of these proclamations?
As council, what do we need to do to make sure that when we do these proclamations, that there's somebody here to receive it?
That's usually the staff is in charge of contacting them. I think that was, I don't know, Mike, if you want to.
Yeah, so with with this approval tonight, this means that we'll, we will make contact with with the the people that. Have previously submitted for these, make sure, and they still go through the process of aligning, lining up somebody to to be there. However, if if we're not able to have someone to be there, we can let you know ahead of time, but these are the ones we would anticipate the council. Some of these are council-led proclamations as well. These are really just the ones we don't need to bring to workshops prior to, but everything else stays the same.
The only other one I know is like Martin Luther King Junior Day. I know we were talking about moving that up to the next meeting, I think. Because we're not having a meeting on January third. That's going to affect Crime Stoppers Month as well.
Yeah, and we've, and Deputy City Clerk Depp was just made contact with them. And we're, we're just waiting on confirmation, but it's likely it could be at the December 19th meeting to be prior to. Rather than a day after at the January 16th meeting. But it's pending their availability.
Right. Any other questions or comments on this one? I think we need a motion, don't we, to approve?
There's that one in here.
Well, you can make one. Go ahead, Amy.
I move to approve the annual review of proclamations approved for issuance. Second.
All right, we've got a first and a second. Any other questions or comments? All right, hearing none. Ciara, would you please poll council?
Counselor Bremen?
Yes.
Counselor Purser? Counselor Williams?
Yes.
Counselor Cry? And Counselor Miller. Motion passes five zero.
All right, with that, we're going to move into our council reports and actions. So I'm going to start with you, Ken, so I don't forget, since you're up on the screen virtually.
Uh, G B R T C meets Monday. Yeah. Nothing else to report.
All right, sounds good. Janine? All right, James?
I have nothing to report, other than I feel like that the Police Department cheated in the ugly sweater department. And I feel like Mike should have very much won that, bare and square.
I suggest you take that up.
I've asked the city clerk to perform an audit. They turned me down.
No, other than that, I have nothing. I I thought that was a great party, though. And whoever planned it this year, Ciara, was that you?
We, yeah, we had a a whole committee, so and Ciara was on it, Odette was on it. We had representatives from each department, our Employee Engagement Committee, and they did a fabulous job.
They did. That's what I was going to say. It was, it was a lot, it was a lot more fun, I would say, than last year.
To Strayhorn, they did a phenomenal job with the catering.
I was going to say, I was going to give kudos to council, because I think that's the first time that I've been on council, that we've had everybody here. So I think that hopefully speaks a lot to staff that everybody was there and.
Yeah, thank you all for being there. That was, I I I think it's the first time in the ten that I've been to that all, the whole council was there. So that was awesome.
Way to go, council.
That's me, no.
I actually did have a pretty busy week. Our historic preservation meeting, we just reviewed like what we had, they have done over the year, which was pretty impressive. And had a little celebration for that. And then I took a builder up on the opportunity to tour. One of the new properties that's being built on Aspen Street and then also the one next door. That there's been some concern about in the community. It's one of the older properties on our Aspen Street. So that was, that was enlightening and it was really nice to just kind of take the opportunity to. Take that invitation and I was thankful that I, that I could do that. He was, it sounds like he's going to be very involved in our community. So I'm sure you guys will be. He said he was going to be reaching out to everyone else. I think he said he'd already reached out to Matthew.
Yeah, I tried calling him back three times and his phone wasn't working or I tried to leave voicemail messages for him, but I'll try again.
Interesting. Um, yeah, I recommend it. I, that was, that was, yeah, that was good. And then, as Mike said, I testified at the hearing today. That was, I was thankful that my schedule was flexible, because that was, it was originally supposed to be nine o'clock this morning. And then it got bumped to eleven o'clock and then it was one o'clock and then two o'clock. And then I got a call at one fifteen saying, right now, right now, right now. So, uh, and then it, you know, I only spoke for like a minute and a half, but I was thankful that I could, I could do that. Because we definitely need to make sure our voice is strong in that. It's important. So I think that's everything.
All right. Matthew?
Can I ask a question on the TMDL? Is there an opportunity to appeal? And if so, what does that look like? Do we know?
Uh, there is, the, the findings won't be, the official findings won't be issued probably for. The end of December. So that would be then the deadline, you know, or the starting deadline for appealing to district court. And so there'd be twenty eight days from that deadline, from that time.
Okay, so we can't, but there is the opportunity to appeal to district.
There is.
Okay, great.
It is a law, yeah. It'd be filing a lawsuit, actually challenging their decision. Not actually appeal per se.
Thank you on that. Today, I had the opportunity to be at CMU and through the Fruta Chamber. And do mock interviews with a couple of their classmates or a couple of the classes, which was a lot of fun. Tomorrow is Leading Edge Graduation. Thursday is ED Partners Holiday Event. And then Saturday is the parade.
Yeah.
Hopefully, everybody can come down and enjoy it.
Judging it again this year?
I am. I'm very judgy.
My favorite Santa is at the farm.
We should get a picture.
And that's all I got.
All right, um, I just wanted to, I don't know if you guys, you've heard, but I got to go to the Chelty Elementary. Ciara, Ciara was there and then we had our, our resource officers there. HDR is an international company that I think they had forty of these that they did. And they picked Fruta as one of the locations this year. And so they had over twenty bikes that they, strider bikes they donated to the kindergarten class that'll be used year after year as part of their gym class. It's really great to hear about some of the things that, you know, we get here. I didn't know that, but I was told by them that they had some of their bikes stolen from the school last year. And so they didn't have the opportunity for some of these kids to learn how to ride. So this is a great opportunity. So it was great to be there and just to see all the kids and just, you know, the impact it's going to have on our community in the future. So that's the main thing I had going on. So other than that, we can move into our next item, which is. Were you not paying attention?
I thought we didn't know.
All right, I started with Ken. All right.
As long as she's happy, that's all I care about.
All right, so with that, we're going to need a motion to convene an executive section, session. So it's regarding Grand Valley Irrigation Company and the city water rights for the Colorado River. And it's for legal advice, so.
I move to convene an executive session for the purpose of receiving legal advice from the city attorney pursuant to CRS Section 2464024B. Regarding the Grand Valley Irrigation Company and unrelated, the city's water rights from the Colorado River as pending in case number 23CW3016. Development.
All right, we've got a first and a second. Any other questions or comments? All right, hearing none. Ciara, would you please poll council?
Counselor Purser?
Yes.
Counselor Williams?
Yes.
Counselor Cry? Counselor Cry? Counselor Miller?
Thanks, Ken.
And Counselor Bremen?
Hi.
Motion passes five zero.
All right, with that, so for the public, we're going to be moving into executive session, so that's going to end our meeting. So we're going to.
Mayor, can we take five?
Yeah, we can take five. So we're going to take a five-minute break as we switch over to our executive session.